Okay, I will now call the regular meeting of the Hazel Park Board of Education to order on this May 22nd, 2023 at 5:30. Roll call, please.
Baldwin?
Yes, here.
Portress?
Here.
Tinton?
Here.
LeFronboys?
Here.
Ruti?
Here.
Rice?
Here.
Maggie?
Here. Okay, next, I would like to ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Intended to honor the wonderful citizens here. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
Motion to approve the agenda?
Do you have a support?
I'll support.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no.
No.
Okay, roll call, please.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Ruti?
Yes.
Portress?
Stain.
Tinton?
I'm Stain.
LeFronboys?
I'm Stain.
Rice?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes, the ayes have it. Okay, next, moving on to special order of business, we have student recognition. Dr. Krupi, the robotics is first.
Yeah, we're really excited to welcome our robotics team up to do a presentation, and so we'll start with that. And Ms. Kubo, would you like to do a?
Yes. That works.
Hi, I'm Kai. This is my first year being part of the team, the robotics team, so. So this is our robotics team, River Drakeens. We do high schoolers and also eighth graders. And we are part of the first robotics program, which means for inspiration and recognition of science and technology. And the first program has, the first program has reached over five thousand, oh my god, five hundred thousand authority.
Think about that.
Five hundred thirty-four thousand stu-, plus students globally during the 2021 and 22 season. And at, at over two hu-, two thousand nine hundred official first events during the 2021 and 2022 seasons. First, first volunteers and educators are, are serve more than twenty-one million plus hours of, of four days events. And first sponsors include more than twenty-five first, oh my god, strategic partners and more than two hundred of the, of four to five hundred companies. And it was founded in 1989 by the inventor Dean Kamen, who's, who created first for, now for students, seven days that can participate, that like to do STEM projects like robotics, sci- science and all of that. And this is our video of our last season, trying to convince people to join.
at the same time, was a very difficult feat to achieve in any other competitions. And we did it two separate individually times.
Way to go.
So this is an info about our team. We were first established in 2017. We, we all, we would meet at the Hazel Park High School, usually what selective dates we would choose from six to eight, and during competition season, six to eight-thirty. We have gotten over five students and seven-plus mentors. And if you would like more information, you can visit our website at www.riverdrakeens.org.
We are a very small team. The average team is about thirty students. So the game strategy changes every year. We learn what the game is on the first Saturday in January. Then we have approximately two months to build the robot. Our first competition was the first week of March. So we designed the robot. We have to design it, we have to do all the programming for it. Larger teams do scouting, which is not something we do because we're too small of a team. But this year, we actually had to do scouting very quickly because we actually ended up a captain in the finals. And when you're a captain in the finals, you pick two other teams to be your partners, to be your alliance. And so we had, so a couple of our mentors and adults go out and watch the games to give us some ideas of who we wanted to be our partners that would work well with us. We also do outreach and community involvement. This picture here was at the Webster Steam Night. The robot was, was giving a demonstration throughout their Steam Night. As you can see, they, we would bring the, the cubes over and set them on the table, and the students would throw them back out on the floor for us to go pick up. The students were very excited. We had several groups that came back two or three times after they went to the other rooms in the Steam Night. It was the most popular room. So. So these are, have been past games. Each time you see the games are different, they have different names. They can be, you, you never know what you're going to do. This year, we had cubes and cones. The year before, we had giant tennis balls. We've had frisbees, we've had milk crates. That's why every year, the robot is different. It has to be built from scratch. You can't use your previous robot. The only year we used a previous robot was during COVID. Because of 2020, they, in 2020, the first competition was the week everything shut down. So we'd never got to use the robot. So in 2021, they did virtual competitions where you videotaped your robot doing certain activities at your school and sent them in. So that was the only time that you were allowed to duplicate or use the same robot. So we use CAD for our robot, and here is, show a little bit of our design, how we started out with a design. That we just found like. Okay.
First scene of the robot.
Yeah. All right, now I can't get it to do what it's supposed to. Okay. It's not cooperating for me. There we go, there's the back. Okay? Sorry. It's, all right, here we go. Yeah.
There you go.
So this was our initial design of the robot. As you can see, it's very similar to what we ended up with. As we built, we made, learned some lessons, like we didn't have enough weight on one end of the robot. What else did we learn, Kai?
Oh, okay. We also had to learn that we had to kind of change our gameplay because of how they even, how the arm was, because originally it was even, but then when we added the weights, it started tilting to one side. So we had to figure out a plan to come up with that and.
And we also learned that in the first set of competitions, we used mainly cones, but we discovered we were actually more effective with the cubes for the second competition, which is why we moved from twenty-fourth place, or eighteenth place, to, to tenth place, and then actually seventh alliance captains. Sorry. My apologies, I lost the rest of her.
Well, all Mrs. Kubo was doing that. Kai, why don't we give a brief demonstration of the, of the robot? So. Let's, yeah, let's drive it a little bit. So one thing this robot can do, is this robot can go sideways?
This robot can go sideways, and it can turn itself in a circle?
It also has googly eyes in the front.
I see them.
And it can actually turn itself in a circle while it's driving forward, or we could turn ourselves in a circle as we're driving backwards. So the way we can go sideways and go in circles is that we use something called swerve wheels. So each wheel can turn on its own. So that way, you can turn the wheel sideways and go sideways and frontwards. And this is like what all the, the good teams do. And what we were able to do over the last three years, especially because during COVID we didn't build new robots, we were able to save our money and reuse all the parts so that we could build a, a very competitive robot. And we have no spares, and we had to cross our fingers and nothing broke. But, and we did buy some used motors from other teams to be able to make that happen. So, you know, that's, that's allowed us to really compete with some of these other teams. So, Mrs. Kubo, do you want to finish the last slide, and then we'll?
So like we said, we have a website. Each year, our, our uniform, our t-shirts, Kai is wearing the black version of it. We have a black and a gray version because our competitions are two full days and one half day. So instead of having to wash and re-wear the same one, we do gray on one day and black on the other. Social media, like I said, we have our website. We're trying to, we have a Facebook page, but it's, it needs to be revamped. And we continue to work on networking, getting it out there that we're known. We do lunch and learns, or we'll do like a lunch demonstration at the high school. Are part of the eighth grade, when the eighth grade came, we were there to encourage eighth graders to join our team.
Okay, so none of this comes for free. And we really appreciate the support that the school board gives us. We have a great facility that we work in the high school. We have a classroom, we have an extra classroom that we can use that's normally used for testing that we drive in. And then we have access to the, what was the, the machine shop, that it's a welding class. So we really have really good equipment compared to any other school. So there's, you know, been great support from the board, and we definitely appreciate that. We also get a grant from the Michigan Department of Education. This year was a little interesting because they promised us $6,000, and then right at the end of the season, they said, oh, you're only going to get eighty percent of that. So it was a little disappointing. But, and interesting is that the non-public schools got ninety-two point nine percent, so go figure. I also wanted to point out, too, that, I just wanted to, just, just a shout out to our students and how well they competed the last competition. The team that we were up against, you know, in, in our competitions, just to give you an idea, that, that team was from Rose Point. It cost a small fortune every year for those students to attend that private school. They have a hundred students, probably fifty to a hundred students, and lots of mentors, and basically unlimited funds. And we were up against this kind of goliath of a team, and we came within five points of beating them. So it was just, used a monumental task, and, and the kids really came through. So just a shout out to how well they did. And, and you know, that's, you know, you know, some of the things we're up against. But we do need your help in that, like, right now, because we, we were expecting some of that money, we're, we're kind of, we're actually at a little negative balance on our team, but we're expecting hopefully some money from General Motors to come in. But one of the things that we do in, in first is that we try to encourage the kids to go out and get community sponsors and corporate sponsors. I mean, your support is great, but we're also trying to teach them that they have to go out and promote their team and get more resources. And our, our mentors are just really all consumed with, with trying to get the, keep the team going. So we really could use your help, maybe somebody could help volunteer to help us with our fundraising. And that's really just outreach to community and corporate sponsors, so the kids can come out, or the students can come out and give a presentation. And that's really what we try to do in first, is we try to earn money by, by, and usually a lot, you know, a lot of companies and areas can do that. So, you know, most teams don't just squeak by with the money that the state gives them. Most teams have at least a ten, fifteen thousand dollar budget. But we've been able to do more with less, and, and the school's been helping us a ton. But, you know, in order to stay competitive, we're, we're going to need some community and corporate sponsors. So hopefully, you know, somebody here might want to help us. So thank you. And once again, the kids, the, the students did fantastic this year, so.
All right, thank you for being here tonight. I love your robotic. It's great. All right, next we have retirements. Dr. Krupi?
Yes, so I'm going to get that back, and. If you could get the board up here, would you like to just shake hands as they come All right. So tonight's special, this is a great time of the year when we get to celebrate staff members' retirements, as well as years of service. And so I first am going to invite Mr. Zernas up, if he's in here, for, I don't see him, for Steve's retirement, who was from Ask Me and Our Painter. Where is he? Mr. Zernas? Is Steve here? Is he out there, too? I'm going to pass this over to you for your few remarks about Steve.
Is Steve in attendance tonight? No, he's not. So Steve's been a valued maintenance employee, I think forty-two years. Recently, I mean, his, his duties and responsibilities were a lot of the mail, painting, plumbing, drywall, he's just done it all. And so he was a valued employee, and I think I, I mean, I talked to him regularly, trying to get him to come back, and he's, he's loving retirement. So unfortunately, we're not going to get a valued individual back to us, so, great.
Our next individual would be Bev Blair. I see Bev. So Bev was with us twenty-four years of service in Hazel Park Schools. Super wonderful. She was elementary, junior high, health reproductive, and probably more before that than when she was with us. So definitely very dedicated, dedicated to our teachers and staff as well, and supporting her through the union. And so I hope that she is enjoying her retirement as well. The next is Sandra Jupe. Morgan, did you want to say a few things about Sandra?
Sandy Jupe was only with me for a very short time, maybe two weeks, but she did an amazing job. Then she retired. But that was pre-planned, I promise. She did a great job helping me get started and kind of showing me the ropes, which I will forever be grateful for. So congratulations to her.
And I'll just say, those of you who know Sandy, she left baskets of eyeglasses of every color and every size for everybody to share, and just a joy and personality every morning. I miss her because every morning we would greet each other, and she would stop in and say hello, great huge smile on her face, and she did love who she was and, and her job here in Hazel Park Schools. So she was pretty fantastic. I got her for eight years. Kathleen Osborne as well.
For every color and every size.
I think I saw her as well. So Kathleen worked for the district for twenty-six years. And again, I can tell you, as I entered into the school district, Kathleen was amazing. I, I should say Kathy. Kathy was amazing. Not only did she think about the job and the respectability and thinking about Hazel Park and Hazel Park Schools, but she also thought about all the people around her. When it came to be the holidays, she'd find just the right thing for a little gift from you, whether it was something because she wanted me to hold my phone up instead of being down, or just, you know, realizing a lot about people's individuality. So she's very dedicated, went above and beyond, especially for adult services and the alternative schools. We would not have gotten where we were without her, so we miss her dearly. So now, Heidi, I'm going to have you come up because you have quite a large group this year that I think decided to go and celebrate together. I think they're going to be vacationing somewhere on a nice cruise together.
So my name is Heidi Coons, and I am here as the principal of Jardan. And I am here to honor, we have nine retirees this year. So I'm going to call each one of them up individually, and then you can all stand up and we can get pictures. We'll start with Lenora Barsha. Karen Delinsky, our school nurse, I do not see her here. Then we have Deborah Ferris, and she is not with us either. Nicole Jones, who is not here. Ann Kelly, who is here. Barb Lapierre. And last but not least, Tracy Vanderhagen. We are really going to miss each and every one of you and everything that you contribute to Jardan, and I just want to say a great big thank you for all that you've done.
I think I noticed also that some of you, if you look out as we've been celebrating your retirement, you'll see notes from former students and former people as well. I noticed that today. So thank you for all you do. You have been the heart and soul of Jardan, and we can only hope that we'll have this amazing staff come up behind you to support our students very long-term, because you, we know that every day you make a difference. So thank you, guys. So next we have Webb. All right, we have a couple of retirees, but I don't see them, so we'll just be real brief. First, Chris Martin, she was the secretary at Webb. She worked in the district for thirty-two years. She started as a para and then became a secretary. She was at Webb for seven years with me. She worked at Hoover, Webster, Central Office, and Webb. See, she provided immense support to me in my new position. She was my secretary and kind of came in with more experience and kind of helped me navigate some of the different reports and all kinds of important stuff that the secretary does. And we also braved COVID together, which was an interesting experience in those big empty buildings. So Chris is definitely missed, and we wish her well in her retirement. And then Lynn Lashbrook, she was in the district for twenty-seven years, nine years at Webb. She came to Webb when Webster closed. She taught fourth grade all of those years. She chose to retire in February. And then she's also known for her quiet, gentle demeanor with students, and for her union leadership and support of teachers. So we miss Lynn, too, and wish her well in her retirement. And our last but not least, Webster.
Good evening to the board, Dr. Krupi and our lovely audience tonight. I'm here to recognize Deborah Napper, better known as Deb. She, come on up, come on up. She's served the district for twenty-eight years. I've had the pleasure of working with her for the past three, and although that's a short time in her Hazel Park career, her dedication is very obvious. She has really contributed to the success at Webster Early Childhood Center for the past few years. Always there when we needed a helping hand or someone to fill in, always willing to work those extra hours even when she has a lot going on outside of school. So we are going to very much miss Deb and her huge contribution to Webster Early Childhood Center. We wish you well.
And there was not a last but not least. Christine Schmidt was also secretary to, ooh, custodians up here in her final, and she left us, I think, maybe in October. Don't see her here, but she was, she kept all the custodians together and scheduled, and Greg, which we all know that was a really hard job, too. So. So, but we just thank her for her service and miss those faces around us. May I start with years of service? Something that we started about eight years ago was years of service. And we have a lot of people tonight. Some people may not be here and we understand, we will make sure that, one, we get all those retirement gifts out to them, but also years of service. So we have a pretty long list for five years. I'm going to ask if Ms. Jamie will hand out those five years as I read through. Sarah Batiste. Dorothy May Bell. Joyce Blackburn. Chris Brew. Juliana Burgess. Jessica Dwecky. Carla Gressley. You come up and get your pin. James Haas. Sarah Hoffman. Renee Jackson. Deborah Jewell. Donalee Love. Wendy Musarelli. Colleen Patterson. Sherri Reitz. Brandon Rubin. Caitlin Sandborn. Alenny Skaupulis. Kate Spindler. And Matthew Tyson. Pretty exciting. That was a pretty huge five years and our hands are getting sore already, aren't we? We have more to go. Ten years. Tanya Archibald. Abdul Carmen Biddy. Carrie Fresh Erwin. Lisa Houghton. Andrea Ray. And Joan Robinski. And that will be our ten-year. Moving on to fifteen, Nancy Anderson. Andrea Clayton. You guys are in a class of your own. Twenty years. And we have more, all the way up to thirty-five. Pretty exciting. Dave Bean. Patricia Bonfield. Pam Curry. Kelly Evans. Mary Noth. Darcy Platt. Dave Rowland. And Kendall Smith. A class of your own, too. Twenty-five years. Mario Aguero. Laura Brown. Jennifer Jasolt. Catherine Lang. Corey Nastasi. Dawn Phillips. Mona Solaret. Tracy Steen. Thirty years. Amy Dressler. We could bring it to you. We could all come to you. Don't be sorry. Thanks for all you. No, you can send her remote hugs. Thirty years. Karen Frederickson. Cheryl Kelly. Barb Logan. Amy McIntosh. Barb Miller. Tracy Vanderhagen. Sue Watts. And Lori Westbury. And for thirty-five years, Deb Demus. Did we miss anybody else that's out there? Well, Mary Hartman, thirty-three years. Come on up and get your thirty-year pin. Come on up, Mary. We'll celebrate you every day. We'll celebrate you every day. Yeah, they want you to, they want to get their hug in too, Mary. They want to get their shake and hug in too. We are fortunate to have a tremendous amount of dedicated staff in Hazel Park Schools and it says a lot when you see the numbers that are up here. So thank you for all you do and we look forward to celebrating this again next year. Please help yourself to some punch and some cookies.
Well, congratulations to all the retirees and the years of service. That's awesome. Okay, next up is the PBIS presentation, which has been requested by the board, Dr. Papason-Brodwell.
Hello.
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 So hello and thank you for having me tonight. I know that you requested a presentation, PBIS and Trails and our social emotional learning here in Hazel Park. And this request comes at a really good time because May is Mental Health Awareness Month. So this will showcase all the things we are working on in the Student Services Department to ensure that every school and every student has the best services. Okay, what is PBIS? So PBIS, you know, in education, we love acronyms. It stands for Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports. The best way to think about PBIS is this triangle. So if you take a look at it, eighty to ninety percent of your students should be in that green first tier. And then the next tier up should be about five to ten percent of our students in Tier Two. They're going to need a bit more intense interventions. And then the top most intense interventions for the one to five percent of our students are in the red. We use this in all of our schools. We are doing some redesign at Webster in a program called Pyramid, but it's pyramid and it looks exactly like this, in the shape of a pyramid. And PBIS, while we hear those terms and think of it as behavioral support, we also use the same model for academic support. Okay. So the primary purpose is that we are trying to increase academic performance, behavioral performance, on-task behavior. We're trying to increase our staff retention. We have to think about it is, and the way we think about it is, is everyone feeling supported? Do students get what they need? Do our staff get what they need and do our families get what they need? So those are the purposes, the primary outcomes that we're looking for. We are also looking for a decrease in some things, including referrals, suspensions, detentions, and overall classroom disruptions. Some big ideas for PBIS is that we're really focusing on that prevention of disruptive and risk behavior with our students. We're trying to give them predictability so that they come to school and they know what to expect, they know who their mentors are, they know what they're going to get celebrated for, and they know where they're going to get supported when they need it. And we really try to focus on acknowledging those appropriate behaviors, the kind behaviors, respectful. And you might notice in the schools, they usually have, you know, some kind of catchy saying or acronym, and those are those elements of PBIS so that students, staff, parents, families, community members remember them. Okay, PBIS. The basic principles are that students' behaviors can change and we can teach behavior just like we teach academics in the classroom. And that environments and the things that they come into, they walk into every day, the classroom, the lunchroom, the hallway, when they enter on the bus, at sports, on the field, those are environments that we can work to change their behavior in. Part of PBIS really focuses on changing adult behavior to support and welcome students into our classrooms. The biggest thing that we all focus on in PBIS, and this is research-based, is that students, and I think not just students, adults, everyone, does better in an environment that is systemic and predictable and consistent, where they know what to expect and they're comfortable in their surroundings. This is a double click, little rubber. Oh, okay, so you may see these matrices around the school too. And these matrices tell our students what behaviors are expected in each area. Most importantly for PBIS, what we need to do is teach what we expect. So we have to start out day one, letting them know what we expect and what exactly that looks like. And you see there on the left, it shows all the areas of the school. And over on the top, you might see what the school is focusing on. And they focus on very age-appropriate behaviors. You're not going to see the same matrices at Webster as you would see at the high school, but it's very, very specially designed instruction and follow-through with each of the schools. So here are some really neat things because the premise behind PBIS is that we celebrate students and we get them engaged and they start to feel that positive feedback all the time from the things they're working on. So things that they could have, lotteries. Here at Advantage, we hear a lot of those celebrations, congratulations over the loudspeaker. And that's really fun for me because I get to hear them in the hallway too. Positive phone calls home. Postcards sent home. You'll see, I know that Mr. Planis puts Students of the Month on social media and I love to see that. And I would feel really good as a kid too, if I got my picture up to be the Student of the Month. So we try to really celebrate them, get their names out there, and then they are able to act as mentors and models for their peers. So that's what we use for our Positive Behavior Intervention Systems. And another component of our overall social-emotional is we use something called the SABERS. So the SABERS is the Social, Academic, and Emotional Behavior Risk Screner. We use this three times a year. And what it tells us when students take it is how they're feeling and what level of risk they're at. They can have social risk, they can have academic behavioral risk and/or emotional risk. And those are things that we look at to assess how we can help them in the school setting. We are very fortunate in Hazel Park to have social workers, counselors, psychologists, Easter seals, and many more ways to support our students. But the SABERS is what tells us how they're feeling and it allows us to gauge throughout the year where they're at and what we need to do to support them. Next is what is ACIL, Social Emotional Learning. So I don't know that there was a great focus on social emotional learning in the past, but I think that this slide kind of tells it all, right? The student with his head down, how am I feeling today? Am I disgusted? Am I angry? Am I happy? Am I calm? Am I all of it and I just don't understand it? And I need to understand how I can put it in the right place so that I can learn at school and even come to school for a lot of our students. So the CASL-5 is the, excuse me, the model we use. And it really focuses on self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship, and responsible decision-making. And this flows through all facets of a student's life, in the classroom, in the greater school community, with their families and at home, and also in the community. So we use Trails for our social emotional learning. And Tier One of Trails is the Universal Education and Awareness. So as you see on the screen, it kind of shares with you some of the lessons that our teachers are teaching our students so that their social emotional wellness is a part of their everyday. There are a lot of really great things with this. It's really flexible, it allows for conversation, it really digs deep into those positive things that students not only could relate to, but can practice in their everyday life. So twenty brief lessons on this Tier One of Trails. Tier Two is early intervention. So this might be your student that you see struggling with mental health difficulties. And I think, I can speak for all of us, I can even speak as a board member and as a mom with teenagers, that students are struggling with mental health right now. And a lot of that is anxiety and the inability to process events that are happening around them in the greater community. So this tier really offers our students that next level of intervention. And it, excuse me, goes through seven session manuals. Our social workers, psychs, counselors, they all work really hard to integrate this into our students' lives. And we have to think about the scaffolding effect with PBIS, with SABERS, with Trails, so that we're really trying to encompass that whole student and offer them as much support as possible. And the last tier is suicide risk management. Unfortunately, suicide is a reality today. Hazel Park, we've been very lucky. We've really wrapped our arms around our students and supported them, but different school districts that are local have experienced these really horrifying tragedies in their schools. And it doesn't just impact one student or the student who commits suicide. It impacts the entire school, kids that just passed by that student in the hallway to students that played with them on the field or were best friends with them or her. So we have really dedicated ourselves to learning about suicide risk management and what do we need to do to support our students so that we are catching them in that Tier Two phase where they need that mental health support and we're able to really dig deep with them and get them the support, the community agency support that they need so that this is not something that they're facing where their families uh that they need so that this is not something that they're facing, where their families and communities are facing. And then that's it. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you.
I can talk all night, are you sure?
All right, thank you for your presentation.
Love it. Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have the Edison presentation, Dr. Kraus.
Good evening, everybody. Um, for those who don't know me, I'm Michelle Kraus, Principal at Edison. Um, I have the great honor of introducing two of my absolutely fantastic staff who are gonna tell you tonight just a little bit about Edison, it's very short, very sweet, but um we do lots of really important work there. Um, I have my um Head Social Worker, Catherine Byerly, and my Middle School Math Teacher, Kelly Evans, and I'm gonna hand it over to them to tell you a little bit about what we do at Edison.
We wanna start with a brief video that um one of our teachers put together as an overview of Edison.
Edison School is a unique learning environment for unique learners. It serves special education students in grades K through twelve. Each student has an individualized educational program, and teachers deliver differentiated instruction to meet the needs of every learner.
In addition to providing instruction for students in grade-level appropriate general curriculum, Edison School also serves as a therapeutic program and is designed to meet the psychosocial needs of students with emotional and behavioral challenges.
Upon entering the program, students are assigned to the caseload of one of the school's many trained mental health professionals. Schools, social workers, and psychologists work closely with the teachers to implement behavioral supports. That includes but are not limited to behavioral intervention plans, individualized systems of rewards and incentives, and regular psychotherapy sessions. Edison students also benefit from regular consultation with an occupational therapist who prescribes a sensory diet customized for each individual. Students at Edison thrive in small classroom environments with low staff and teacher-to-student ratios, with paraprofessionals supporting instruction and addressing behavioral needs.
Edison School, a unique environment for unique learners in Oakland County and a proud member of the Hazel Park Community Schools Team.
All right, so what is Edison? Edison is a center-based program that provides educational programming for students with emotional and/or behavioral disabilities. We have served as a therapeutic setting for special education in Oakland County since nineteen eighty-seven.
So how does our program work? Our students receive educational and therapeutic programming in accordance with their IEPs and behavior intervention plans. Our students progress through the program through a level system that includes five levels, with each level corresponding with a percentage of behavioral compliance.
We also use PBIS at Edison. Uh, our school-wide behavioral expectations, we have SOAR, which stand for Stay Safe, On Task, Act Responsible, and Respect Everyone. Our students um earn points based on following these expectations, and those points help them move through the level system.
Edison serves only special education students, and each student's educational program is individualized. Our students meet regularly with one of several school social workers or psychologists at Edison, occupational therapy with sensory room and onsite accommodations, uh we have small classes, typically ten students per class, and we have extensive paraprofessional
Edison is a collaboration, and we use a lot of teamwork. There are several disciplines while we collaborate with, uh occupational therapists, speech therapists, social workers, psychologists, special education teachers, and assessment coordinators. We work to provide a therapeutic and consistent educational structure for students with emotional and behavioral disabilities.
Okay, so we also have a Career Center. It's called the ECC or Edison Career Center. The mission of the Edison Career Center program is to provide person-centered and transition-focused educational programming to adults eighteen to twenty-six that have social, emotional, and mental health needs. The ECC strives to prepare participants in becoming engaged, independent, and meaningfully employed members of their respective communities.
So Edison Career Center is also a center-based transition program. Again, it's post-high, ages eighteen to twenty-six. They use person-centered planning process, it focuses on development of independent living skills, uh pursuit of sustained employment, management of emotional well-being, and meaningful involvement in the community civic and recreational activities.
The services that they provide in ECC, our certificates of completion and diploma track participants are both welcome. That didn't make sense the way that I said that, but we do, we take students that are on a diploma track or certificate of completion. Um, they have work-based learning opportunities that focus on core employment skills, they have daily individual and group sessions on social emotional wellness, and community-based instruction for independent living, recreation, and civic engagement.
All right.
And then the participants at ECC made these little gifts from their greenhouse.
They have a greenhouse that they tend, that's absolutely fantastic. And I just wanna say, um, the teacher and social worker there couldn't be here tonight, um have done just a tremendous job in getting the greenhouse up and running. Every Wednesdays, they do smoothies and rats for staff to buy, they grow all their own herbs, their vegetables.
Thank you.
They run other micro businesses during the holiday season. Um, you know, we opened our new building in nineteen twenty, we had to shut down in March of twenty, so we had just gotten things going and we had to leave, and then we had a staff changeover at ECC, um and with this new staff, um over the last couple of years, they've just done tremendous work, so. That's Edison, I mean, we do so much more, but.
Thank you for your presentation. Anybody have anything?
The age frame, what's the youngest to?
Oh, um, so um, it's at regular Edison, it's K through twelfth grade, so we have two elementary, three middle, and three high school rooms, and then ECC, we have right now one um adult transition classroom, but the capacity for three.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is public comment. I don't have any, anybody that signed up for public comment, so seeing none, we'll go on to the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move the Board accept the consent agenda as presented.
Do they have a support? Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Ruti?
Yes.
Fortress?
abstain.
Hinton?
abstain.
Lepron Boys?
abstain.
Rice?
yes.
Maggie?
Yes. Okay, the yeses have it. Uh, next, uh, we have our unfinished business, and we have one item, and this is for the second reading of the policies.
I move the Board of Education approve the policies as written.
Do they have a support? Any discussion?
Just simply, we, uh, the uh Policy Committee met again, and uh we'll have some other policies and new business as well.
I still had a question about the um, the dress code policy that attempted to get answered but didn't quite get answered. The current policy says a student who violates the rules will not be admitted to class until they dress properly, and the new policy that we're approving doesn't say that, it doesn't have that checked. And so I wondered why we're changing, and um I feel that we're not giving guidance to the people who have to enforce the dress code policy.
Well, that um guidance comes in the administrative procedure, and there are some times when we wouldn't want to not allow a kid to get into class until their, you know, parents can get there. Oftentimes, we give them clothes, but sometimes if they're younger, we may send them off to class and then deal with that later. And so each, uh, they get guidance through our student handbook that's later in this meeting.
So.
It is not recommended that we check out.
So the guidance is in the admin, each administrator and each teacher handbook that tells them how to address that issue?
There is an administrative procedure that will be looked at after this, and um there is a, a student handbook that's done at, that the administrators meet with Dr. Postel, and it's in here, and that gives them guidance on what to do with dress code.
So couldn't we add see administrative handbook, or this is left up to administrator discretion?
No, it, there's clear guidance in the handbook that they've come up with. So you wouldn't wanna, sorry.
Well, if a parent was gonna read the policy, they wouldn't know, if their child isn't dressed correctly, they won't know to look in the handbook if the policy doesn't direct them.
Each parent gets a copy of the uh student handbook, uh it's also on the website. Dr. Sch, uh, Miss, uh, Tammy Schultz sends it out every week, the junior high sends it out every week in their um piece, and when they re-enroll, they have to click on it and look at it uh and sign that they've reviewed those policies.
Any more discussion?
It's really at the will of the Board.
Any more discussion?
Yeah, I don't see what's so hard about putting a sentence, see.
I'd like to ask our attorney a question.
Administrator.
I'd like to know if we have to deliberate with people that are abstaining their votes. So I don't mind the questions, I wanna know why we have to ask the questions, assuming that they're gonna abstain all their votes.
I'm sorry, the attorney works for him, he doesn't work for the Board. John is here, and John may be addressed.
I'm sorry, I don't remember the attorney being listed.
Let's stop the discussion right now. Roll call, please.
Baldwin? Yes. Ruti?
Yes.
Fortress?
abstain.
Hinton?
abstain.
Lepron Boys?
abstain.
Rice?
yes.
Maggie?
Yes. Okay, the yeses have it. Next, we have new business. Can I get a motion for item A, uh, for the additional early-on teachers?
I move the Board of Education approve the hiring of two additional early-on, birth-to-three teachers for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Baldwin? Yes. Ruti?
yes.
Fortress?
abstain.
Hinton?
abstain.
Lepron Boys?
abstain.
Rice?
yes.
Maggie?
Yes. Okay, the yeses have it. Next, we have teacher consultant um for the elementary.
I move the Board of Education approve the addition of an elementary-level teacher consultant for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
I second.
Any discussion?
Yep, really quickly, I just wanna, um, we are moving back to some teacher consultant roles to help support our teachers who have uh so high of numbers, as well as to help give guidance in the building, so it's a very important uh piece for our schools and for our childrens to be successful.
Okay, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Baldwin? Yes. Ruti?
yes.
Fortress?
abstain.
Hinton?
abstain.
Lepron Boys?
abstain.
Rice?
yes.
Maggie?
Yes. Okay, yeses have it. Next, we have drama interns. Can I get a motion, please?
I move the Board of Education approve the continuation of the drama department internship and to add one additional intern through the summer and the twenty-three, twenty-four school year as presented.
I second.
Okay, any discussion?
What an amazing opportunity for our students to be working and supporting in the school, leading the way in drama. Um, it is so excited to have the Board of Education approve the opportunity for three students to work with the drama. I'm really proud of our Board of Education to support this for our kids.
Um, I noticed Mr. Fairbrother is here, if he wants to speak on it.
Would you like me to?
I don't think we've heard you speak, if that's okay with Rick?
Yeah, it's okay.
I would prefer, however, to treat this more, I would prefer to treat this more than Kim and Ash, should anyone have a question. Um, but I'm very excited to be here about this item and half of the agenda tonight. What I would say is, we started this drama internship program just a few months ago, and it's already yielded really incredible results. Uh, those of you who, all, actually, all of you came to see our fall, um, our spring production of The Addams Family, which was tremendous. Uh, in no uncertain terms, it was called uh the best show in eight years, and it was very nice, it was very nice, but you know, momentum needs to keep building to ensure that our program grows and remains competitive, uh especially in um this area in which, right now, there is quite a dearth of, of quality drama programming. Um, and so I think this is a really, presents a really exciting opportunity for Hazel Park Schools to be at the forefront of the performing arts, um and to be attracting incredible candidates, uh students to this school, and one of the ways that we can do that is through uh programs like the drama internship. One of my incredible interns is here right now, Kristy Gardner, uh who is, if you can believe it, only a junior, so actually, I would like to get a round of applause for Kristy has been an enormous resource uh and workforce when it comes to rechartering our chapter of the International Thespian Society, uh which was very active under the leadership of former drama teacher Ron Belbella, who graduated, who retired about fifteen years ago, and it's, um, it fell into inactive status then, and we're really excited to say that it has been rechartered, and um we're gonna be inducting our first cohort of troop, four, 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 three members, uh within the next, well, tomorrow night. If you, if you come to the Honor of the Vacation, you'll be able to see some of our seniors get inducted into the Honor of the Society of Sports, um, to demonstrate their excellence to theatrical and dramatic uh programming um at an international level.
Thank you.
Pass it.
Any questions? Any other discussion?
I have this job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Roll call, please.
Baldwin? Yes. Ruti?
yes.
Fortress?
abstain.
Hinton?
abstain.
Lepron Boys?
abstain.
Rice?
yes.
Maggie?
Yes. Yeses have it. Next, we have the High School Drama Theater Circuit.
I move the Board of Education approve the drama department request for a high school theater circuit at a cost not to exceed six hundred and forty dollars per semester as presented.
I second.
Okay, any discussion?
Yep, just quickly, again, I wanna pride our Board of Education for approving the opportunity for our students to go to other shows, um and watch them, to see what's happening in other high schools and be proud of the amazing work that's happening here. That's how you grow, the more you see, the more you grow, and so, we're looking at going uh twice, uh for four different shows, at six hundred and forty dollars.
All right, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Baldwin? Yes. Ruti?
yes.
Fortress?
abstain.
Hinton?
abstain.
Lepron Boys?
abstain.
Rice?
yes.
Maggie?
Yes. Yeses have it. Next, we have the summer cleanup for the drama department.
I move the Board of Education approve the drama department request for summer cleanup as presented.
I second.
Okay, discussion, please.
Just quickly, I had an opportunity to go into that room back there last week when we were doing our safety pieces, and it needs some cleaning, and so this summer, our teachers are gonna organize, do some shelves with our students, and get that organized for the shows ready to come.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Baldwin? Yes. Ruti?
yes.
Fortress?
abstain.
Hinton?
abstain.
Lepron Boys?
abstain.
Rice?
I will be more than happy to give this to you, yes.
Maggie?
Yes. Yeses have it. Next, we have the new course for drama.
I move the Board of Education approve the new course and materials for the drama department at cost not to exceed fifteen thousand as presented.
I second.
Any discussion?
So, super exciting, as we continue to grow our courses, there were a few things that were requested, and these uh might not be the very specific items, but the cost for those items, and under Mr. Fairbrother's guidance, uh we will continue to grow that program, so again, I wanna thank the Board for voting affirmatively to continue to grow and give our kids the best opportunities.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Baldwin? Yes. Ruti?
yes.
Fortress?
abstain.
Hinton?
abstain.
Lepron Boys?
abstain.
Rice?
yes.
Maggie?
Yes, the yeses have it. Next, we have, moving on, we have the National Gun Awareness Day.
I move the Board of Education approve the resolution for gun violence awareness. I move the Board of Education approve the resolution for gun violence awareness day as presented.
I second.
Discussion, please.
It's ready for you to read. So very excited, we're declaring, which is very near and dear to all of our hearts, especially educators, teachers, administrators, that we receive a support from each and every one of you centered around the importance of this National Gun Violence Awareness Day. As you know, the governor just supported another bill that made it important for us to have our guns locked up, as well as we can report when there's mental health concerns with individuals with guns. I can't think of anything more important, especially when I just spent three days with a safety expert talking about how to make sure our schools are safe, that we would highlight the importance of gun violence and the safety.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Ruti?
Yes.
Fortress?
Abstain.
Tintin?
Abstain.
Lepron Boys?
Abstain.
Rice?
Yes.
Nagy?
Yes, yeses have it.
Next, we have item H is a Freedom of Information Act, and this is informational. Do we need a motion for this one? Get a motion?
Oh, no, we do not, no.
No.
Just for information. Again, it's just a, when we receive them, we place them out there for the community. This is a request for the salaries of hall monitors, hall security.
Okay, next up is the student discipline. Can I get a motion, please?
I move the Board of Education approve the expulsion of the student as written.
I second.
Okay, any discussion?
Well, while we can't do this, I want to share the process that we go through in order to move towards an expulsion. Currently, any fights or drugs or excessive behavior, the principals have the opportunity to send them for me for a review to see if it fits the student code of conduct for expulsion. Oftentimes, we work as a community to come up with other opportunities for them, such as attending the alternative school or being on a behavior plan or going back for tutoring or connecting them with mental health or perhaps an assessment. There are oftentimes when students choose to do a multiple violation of the code of conduct when it comes to physical violence and/or drugs or other items, and then we move to expulsion. Families do have the opportunity to come to the school board, or they're told that, they're told that in a letter, to ask to not be expelled. And that is what we have today. The family has chosen not to come and appeal it. Oftentimes, at this point, family members agree, and they're looking for other ways to support their child.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Ruti?
Yes.
Fortress?
Abstain.
Tintin?
Abstain.
Lepron Boys?
Abstain.
Rice?
Yes.
Nagy?
Yes, yeses have it.
Next, we have the 23-24 handbooks.
I move the Board of Education approve the 23-24 handbooks as written.
I second.
Discussion.
Amazing work again by our staff. Kudos to all of you in the handbooks that are put together, and we continue to grow. There may be some changes before the fall. If so, we'll kind of highlight those in some workshops before it starts. But I just want to shout out to the building principals, administrators, teachers, custodians, everyone that has put this through to make it clear to our parents, students, and families.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I, excuse me, sorry. Those policies and handbooks, I was going to go through them for the dress code policy, but this, 340 pages, and I was gone for the weekend. And even if I was home for the weekend, I don't think I could read 340 pages in a weekend. So I was, in the future, or when the changes come, if we can get these a month earlier or two weeks early, as opposed to a few days early, so that I have the time to go through them and read them all.
Sure, I do want to remind you that those are available to you in your drive, in your board drive all around, so you can be able to see what's in it. There's very small changes, they are the same handbooks that have been out there, just small changes.
Then maybe we can highlight, like you said...
They're highlighted in there for you in different colors and underlined.
Okay, I didn't, like I said, I didn't have a chance to go through them because...
Any other discussion?
So I have a question. I'm curious, is, what is the hierarchy? Is it board policy and then handbook? Or is it handbook, board policy? Which one trumps the other?
They are to follow, so it's board policy, administrative procedures, and your handbooks are guided from that. And oftentimes, you see them reflect back to the board policy. Do you have a specific question or concern of the policy that you're seeing?
Nope, I was just, I was just asking.
Any other discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Ruti?
Yes.
Fortress?
Abstain.
Tintin?
Abstain.
Lepron Boys?
Abstain.
Rice?
Yes.
Nagy?
Yes.
Yeses have it. Next up is the administrative assistant to the assistant superintendent of teaching and learning position.
I move the Board of Education approve the new administrative assistant to the assistant superintendent of teaching and learning with an additional cost not to exceed $19,000 as written.
I second.
Okay, any discussion?
Yes, Mrs. Cales is coming up to discuss the position.
Kristi.
So this is simply just moving the administrative assistant for the assistant superintendent out of the union, much like we did Jason's secretary. That's pretty much it. Other than, we're hoping to pay this person a little bit more for the duties that they would do for us.
Any other discussion, any questions? Okay, roll call, please.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Ruti?
Yes.
Fortress?
Abstain.
Tintin?
Abstain.
Lepron Boys?
Abstain.
Rice?
Yes.
Nagy?
Yes, yeses have it.
Next, we have the administrative contracts.
I move the Board of Education approve the unaffiliated contracts as written.
I second.
Discussion, please.
Much like we do every, every year, this would just be a renewal of the unaffiliated, so like central office contracts, and also include a 4% raise for this group. There are a couple of members of the group that receive a different percentage. They're highlighted in the memo.
Any questions, any discussion? Roll call, please.
I have, I have questions. I was wondering if anybody on the personnel committee looked at this, because there's two people on here that, one just got an increase last board meeting, the other one, an increase in the February board meeting, and now we're giving them an additional 4%. But according to this, we're giving one an additional 6%, so, and it's not noted. So I'm a little confused on that. And then there's another person on the list that has a probational period of one year and getting the 4%. And so I'm kind of wondering on that.
It was my understanding that those increases were performance-based, so that's what was asked in the meeting.
Yeah, but when you're on a probational period and you just got a $10,000 wage increase, I would think that that would be your performance.
It was discussed and shared with the personnel committee, and they recommended to move it forward.
I would make a recommendation to the board, and if I, this is approved, I really question the board doing their due diligence.
Any other discussion?
In the past, if somebody was on probation, we waited until their year was up. So are we changing our rules?
We've always done raises at the end of the school year. They were not done as a year in the middle of the school year. They were done in the June-July, so this is for July 1st in the new school year.
We removed a person in the past that wasn't here until September.
The recommendation has always been from the administration to give the raises and start the new contract July 1st.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Ruti?
Yes.
Fortress?
Abstain.
Tintin?
Abstain.
Lepron Boys?
Abstain.
Rice?
Yes.
Nagy?
Yes, the yeses have it.
Moving on, the non-certified staffing. Can I get a motion?
I move the Board of Education approve the non-certified staffing as written.
I second.
Discussion, please.
As highlighted in the memo, there's some ins and some outs at the different schools due to student population. So I want to highlight that we would be increasing for paraprofessional positions across the district, and this includes all of our non-certified staff, which would be like secretaries, custodian, maintenance, paraprofessionals.
Okay, any other discussion or questions? Roll call, please.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Ruti?
Yes.
Fortress?
Abstain.
Tintin?
Abstain.
Lepron Boys?
Abstain.
Rice?
Yes.
Nagy?
Yes, the yeses have it.
Next on the agenda is non-union staff.
I move the Board of Education approve the non-union contract as written.
I second.
Discussion, please.
As you'll see in the memo, so this is for our non-union staff. As you see in the memo, that would increase some pay increases for the GSRP preschool academy teachers and the GSRP associate teachers, also our security guards, and with the addition of one staff for the security guards as well.
Any discussion or questions?
I would like to just highlight as well that this is also additional days for GSRP teachers that are in here as well. It was 165, it's now 180 days. The state is encouraging, and we'll be giving some grants, we hope we'll get one, for having all preschool students five days a week. Really super excited about this proposal and us rightsizing the salaries of our staff to make sure that we maintain and continue having an outstanding staff. So thank you for your consideration.
Any other questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Ruti?
Yes.
Fortress?
Abstain.
Tintin?
Abstain.
Lepron Boys?
Abstain.
Rice?
Yes.
Nagy?
Yes, the yeses have it.
Next, we have the secretarial group.
I move the Board of Education approve the above changes, for the presented changes for the secretarial group.
Second.
Discussion, please.
We discussed with the secretarial group some changes that we'd like to do to their contract. This includes some reclassification of positions, some salary and longevity changes, certain end dates, and reclassification, I guess, of what we were calling vacation days. Yeah, so that's about it.
I would also like to add that what we did is, we are continuing to work with our groups to make sure that we have a wage that is respectful and competitive with those around us so that we can keep and maintain our highly qualified staff. This means that we're starting with a fair wage for all of our staff. We're really excited to bring that to you, and I think it's really important that we stand positively behind this and support this. We additionally have removed one level, and what we've done is bring all secretaries, except the high school secretary, into one base level, and that will be Class 2. Class 3 remains attendance and receptionist, of which, right now, we don't have an attendance secretary. If Mrs. Schultz is watching, no, you're not getting one at this time, because she said, does that mean I get one? But we're really excited to present and put something together that we feel will give us longevity with our secretarial group.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Ruti?
Yes.
Fortress?
Abstain.
Tintin?
Abstain.
Lepron Boys?
Abstain.
Rice?
Yes.
Nagy?
Yes, the yeses have it.
Next, we have additional maintenance intern. Can I get a motion, please?
I move the Board of Education approve the additional maintenance intern position for the summer season, June 13 to August 25.
Second.
Okay, discussion, please.
Super excited once again that we have so many students that want to intern in the school district, and we know that their job is fantastic, that we are asking for one more to bring that up to the total of five. So we give our students in Hazel Park Schools an opportunity to work, be successful, and learn how wonderful it is to be in here. So thank you again for supporting our students.
Okay, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Ruti?
Yes.
Fortress?
Abstain.
Tintin?
Abstain.
Lepron Boys?
Abstain.
Rice?
Yes.
Nagy?
Yes, the yeses have it.
Next, we have now onto the high school bleachers. Can I get a motion, please?
I move the Board of Education approve the high school bleachers not to exceed $242,115.
I second.
Did I have a support?
Yep.
Okay, discussion, please. Jason?
Any questions from the board members about the replacement of the bleachers?
No, I'm super excited about this. So thank you to the Buildings and Grounds Committee for doing their due diligence and getting this worked on.
Right, this is, again, this is just another case of us being able to shuffle dollars around when some projects are ready to go or are able to go, that we were able to supplement the great things, such as bleachers in the high schools.
Are they going to be done by next week?
We are, we're slating, because of the way the situation is, you know, the bleacher companies are crazy busy over the summer, so we will probably have to have a shutdown of the main gym for two weeks in October.
Gotcha.
But again, I think they'll suffer through the fact that they're getting new bleachers.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Yes.
Ritchie?
Yes.
Fortress?
Upstain.
Henson?
Upstain.
LaFrown Boys?
Upstain.
Rice?
Yes.
Nagy?
Yes. Yes, as have it. Next up is the Jardon doors.
I move the Board of Education to approve the project for design and bidding with final approval after bidding returning to the Board for final approval.
I second.
Any discussion? I'm in favor.
I'm super excited.
I think way before my time, I call that BFA, before Amy, when the buildings came together and Jardon was there, there was talk about having doors that separate. We know this week from our building audit, when we had the door individuals there, that we are able to put some doors in place that will separate Jardon and Webb, and if there's a student that's heading towards Webb, we can hit a lockdown in the office where they will not be able to go into the other side. You will not be able to have those locked down all the time, but it will be on a lockdown call, and, just to make sure that everybody's comfortable there. So, we're really excited that this is going to get done, and looking forward to hopefully having it done before August.
Any discussion?
You're shaking your head, isn't that before August?
So, the installation of the doors and purchase will probably be above and beyond $26,000. So, what we are going to do is, we have to design it first, they'll give us an estimate, and then if we can get a door company to do it for less than $26,000, then we'll do it without bidding. If it's over $26,000, then we'll have to bid it out, which will then push back the timeframe. Because bidding, doing the documents, posting to the public, receiving the documents back, evaluating the bids, and then awarding, all take time.
We're super excited to push for that August, end of August date.
We need to work with our contractors to see if we can get that under the $26,000.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Aldman?
Yes.
Ritchie?
Yes.
Fortress?
Upstain.
Henson?
Upstain.
LaFrown Boys?
Upstain.
Rice?
Yes.
Nagy?
Yes. Yes, as have it. Next, we have the Ford Office Update.
I move the Board of Education to approve the addition of two doors not to exceed $20,000.
I second.
Have a support?
I support.
Discussion, please.
Where are these two doors going?
They are going between the offices of Dr. Coupia and her administrative assistant, and my administration, administrative assistant, and myself. So, what will happen is, is anybody coming into our office suites are going to go through our administrative assistant first, wait, in a waiting room if we're busy, and then come into our offices through the new doors.
Where's the waiting room?
It's going to be, so the two individuals are going to be in the room, and then it'll be in front of them. So, they'll be waiting in the administrative assistants' offices.
Any other discussion?
I have something. According to Board President, he said, he said this should not, he didn't want to see this on the agenda anymore, and it's on the agenda. And I did tell you, Buildings and Grounds, if I was voting, I would vote no. I think it isn't money well spent. I, and I mentioned the safe entrances, and you explained that may be coming, there's grants, whatever, and I just think we need to sit on it until we take care of our kids.
I have something to say. You know, at first, I wasn't in favor of it, but then I, when I started thinking about meetings that go on there with children, and the expulsions, and the families that come into that office every, almost every day, I can't say every day, because I'm not here, but, but if there's ever a problem, at least they have a chance to be able to exit out of that room and go to another room, and be able to get out of, if there's a security breach of some sort. So, to me, I thought it was a positive thing. So, it is for children. It's not just for adults or the employees, it's for children and families also, so, so I have to say. Any other discussion?
What's the purpose of having someone here at the reception desk and having chairs out here? Wouldn't that be a holding area?
It is, I mean, right now, it is. There's two or three chairs out there, but there's any number of individuals that are sitting out there waiting for other offices to be opened up or meeting, so we're just trying to pull people out of this small area here, because, again, a lot of the individuals are meeting with Dr. Coupia and myself, so we're trying to get them out of this area and into somewhere else within the building.
I think it makes sense. I find myself often wandering into Jamie and Nancy's office, waiting for, you know, the previous meeting to end, or, you know, if it's okay to enter, whether it's a private issue or a public issue that's happening, I don't want to intervene, so I can appreciate that.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Aldman?
Yes.
Ritchie?
Yes.
Fortress?
Upstain.
Henson?
Upstain.
LaFrown Boys?
Upstain.
Rice?
Yes.
Nagy?
Yes. Yes, as have it. Next, we go on to the policies for first reading.
I move the Board of Education to approve the policies as written, first reading.
I second.
Okay, discussion.
These were the policies that were put forth just for first reading, so if you read them and see some other questions and comments you have, I'm going to guess that the policy committee may meet before the next meeting, because we'll be looking at another vendor and see what they think, but let's see if you have any questions here.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Aldman?
Yes.
Ritchie?
Yes.
Fortress?
Upstain.
Henson?
Upstain.
LaFrown Boys?
Upstain.
Rice?
Yes.
Nagy?
Yes. Yes, as have it. Next, we go on to the superintendent pay increase.
I move the Board of Education to approve the pay increase for the superintendent as presented.
Second.
Discussion, please.
I have a quick, I'm not, and this goes with the pay increase and the extension of her contract. I never received what her, what our goals were for her, and so I don't know if she meant them, to say that the 4% or the extension should be awarded. I never received what, because I was on the board last year, I never received what we set, the board set forth as goals for her to accomplish.
I believe that they are inside, again, the file that we shared with you, the shared file that's out there along with my contract, and you chose not to evaluate me, so those goals were null and void, as far as that goes on for, I don't, I didn't have to share those.
So, if we don't evaluate, you don't have to meet the goals?
They're, the goals are part of the evaluation.
Huh, all right. I, well, I looked in last, like, I looked in previous minutes to see if I could find the goals, and they weren't there, so I was just, I'll have to go read that file again.
Kristi, yes?
Just stating obvious of the memo, we're looking for a 4% increase for Dr. Coupia. It would align with the central office staff increases.
Okay, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Aldman?
Yes.
Ritchie?
Yes.
Fortress?
Upstain.
Henson?
Upstain.
LaFrown Boys?
Upstain.
Rice?
Yes.
Nagy?
Yes. Yes, as have it. Next up is a superintendent contract extension.
I move the Board of Education to approve the two-year extension of the superintendent's contract, moving the term date to June 30th, 2028.
I second.
You have a motion, we have a support. Discussion, please.
I'm just kind of curious, and what grounds do, does the Board feel that she is, we're giving her two more years on her extension?
I would like to point out to the highly effective evaluations, the past. I think that speaks for itself.
Okay, and she was, and we redid our contracts last year and gave her three years, so why are we extending it again to give her five years?
Why wouldn't we?
Because our, we're second in Oakland County from the bottom of schools. In the state of Michigan, we're in the bottom 25%.
Most districts don't have, they're having trouble getting superintendents, and right now, a lot of the superintendents do have a five-year contract, so that way you can keep your superintendent in your school district.
I can respect that argument, Rick, but there was 36 people that applied for Clintendale Superintendent. Thirty-six. It doesn't seem like there's...
They weren't all fall.
Thirty-one at Mount Clemens. We're not accredited schools anymore. We used to be accredited. We don't have a three-to-five-year strategic plan. We don't have three-to-five-year school improvement plans and mission statements at every school, so I think those are good reasons.
I want to clarify that information. We do have a strategic plan. It has been approved every year by the Board. We have plans in MYKIP, and they were presented to all of you by building, because that's what's, by district, that's on there, and you weren't accredited way before I came. And so, we actually have talked about, just recently, Dr. Dolmich and I, through MYKIP, they're looking at accreditations in a different manner, and so, we actually talked this morning about the importance of making Hazel Park Schools accredited again. They haven't been accredited for some time.
We were accredited until 2015. We were always accredited, forever and ever. The strategic plan, I contacted somebody, they've never heard of a one-year strategic plan, never heard of it. I said, "Well, that's what we have."
I'm respectfully, we had a three-to-five-year. We did not extend it, and every year, the Board plans on a new one, and that's brought forth. We certainly can do the three, five-year plan with the community, moving forward, but it takes a whole community piece to do that.
You did that when you first came. It was very lengthy, and it takes a lot of time, and it's very good, because you have input from all different stakeholders. And I believe when we went COVID, we went to this one year, and then this past year, we went to one year, but it's required that it's three to five years.
Strategic plan is not required. Lovely, because I'm the first one to have gotten one for Hazel Park Schools, but it's not required.
I'd like to call the question. I feel like this discussion was better suited for evaluation, that as a Board, we decided not to do this year.
You need to have a second to call the question?
Sure, I'd like to call the question.
Okay.
One person cannot stop discussion.
She called it the order, we have...
I second.
We have a second. Okay, roll call, please.
Aldman?
Yes.
Ritchie?
Yes.
Fortress?
Upstain.
Henson?
Upstain.
LaFrown Boys?
Upstain.
Rice?
Yes.
Nagy?
Yes. Yes, as have it. Last item of new business is a superintendent celebratory supper and show.
I move the Board of Education to approve the busing and funding per student, per show, for the tickets and dinner costs as presented.
I second.
I have to hand this over to Mark. Another exciting piece to do is to go and take our students that qualify twice a year downtown, or maybe East Lansing, wherever we choose to do it, certainly not Ann Arbor, to go and have a show and dinner, and to experience the amazing things that are happening in the arts. So, super excited to bring this to the Board of Education.
Any other discussion? How many times is that, like, how would it?
Twice a year, it'll happen.
Twice a year, for how many students?
I think we said 20. Let me go back, I just closed that down.
I see ahead, not for 20.
Yep.
And then 20, you said?
Twenty each time.
Okay, any more discussion? Roll call.
Yeah, I'm kind of curious, so, our athletes, our football players, are we going to start taking them to the Lions game? Are we going to start taking our baseballs, kids to the Tiger game?
Well, absolutely. As a matter of fact, this week, we are taking students at the high school to the Tigers game. We got free tickets that are out there for them, but the show's a little different than one of those. Many times, our kids do not have the opportunity to go out and have the experience of the shows. Mr. Fairbrother was really great about getting some tickets for us, but that opportunity lasts a lifetime for our kids, and an opportunity to have a nice meal when you are doing things. And, so, yes, we do get kids out to those activities. We take the band to Ford Field and have that opportunity as well. We took our students this year, when they were at bowling, they got to stay overnight to make sure that they were able to get that thing, so, yeah, I think we continue to raise the bar higher and higher for all of our kids. Excited that we're able to do these for kids.
I just think this is opening up a can.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Aldman?
Yes.
Ritchie?
Yes.
Fortress?
Upstain.
Henson?
Upstain.
LaFrown Boys?
Upstain.
Rice?
Yes.
Nagy?
Yes. Okay, the yeses have it. Now, we will move on to the superintendent report. Dr. Coupia.
Great, thank you. Well, thank you for approving all these wonderful things for kids and for our staff. It makes a difference, and the morale becomes much different, but we are so supportive to the wonderful things that our staff are suggesting that we do for kids, to make it better every day, so thank you. Enclosed for you is the Leo Quarterly Report. Dr. Dolmich sometimes does a presentation, we decided to do it in a written format, so that you can continue to see some of the fantastic things we're doing. Enrollment is starting, so if you, as parents, are listening today, it is time to re-enroll your students for next year. We are looking at about 3,200 students right now, and when you roll out the seniors, right now, we're at about 2,600, and so this is the time, right, where every month, we look at those students that are enrolling. We're getting a great turnover from early childhood to kindergarten, so things are looking bright in Hazel Park Schools, and a lot of fun things happening for our kids with a tremendous amount of spirit. The fundraiser pieces are out there as well. Most of our groups have been really wonderful about getting those fundraisers approved, showing what we're earning, so that we're having clear transparency to our community and to our families as well. I do want to mention that we are changing class day a little bit, and Mrs. Schultz has got a great idea to do what often other school districts do, and that is to have an honor convocation, that's tomorrow night. Super excited to see that, with a little activity afterwards, with some treats and things that are out there as well. Really, that'll be a great time. Wednesday night is advantage graduation, and Thursday night is our seniors' band concert at the high school. That's just this week. From here on out, it is a fun ride, with so many celebrations that are happening. And last Friday was the last day for our students at advantage, seniors, and our seniors at the high school, so kudos, and I think we're going to have a great graduating class. Really thankful, again, to our presenters tonight. Wow, the Edison is just amazing, that was a great video, and the student just took my breath away when they did that as well. I wanted to give kudos out to the athletic department for all the great junior high and high school sports, but also for hosting the regional last Thursday night, Thursday night. Thursday night, it was great. I was able to see a couple of our state championship runners run and jump, and so we're on our ways to state. And I want to also thank all those staff. You can see that the morale and the positivity is evasive through all of our schools. Super wonderful. Look at the longevity that we're seeing. It just warms my heart to see all of that. Keep watching us, and I'm sure there'll be some wonderful things that come out from our scores, from the M-Step, that you will hear about in the fall, as well as our iReady scores, that you'll hear about at our workshop in June. And I think, other than that, I could keep going, but that's it.
Okay, does anyone have requests for future agenda items or calendar date concerns? Seeing none. Public comment? Anybody wishing to speak in public comment? Seeing none. Can I get them, I'm sorry. Board member, Board Member and Administrative Comments. Debbie, we'll start with you.
I hate sitting on the end. No. I just wondered, I asked a while ago for the itemized bill for our legal services, and it was supposed to be discussed, so I'm wondering what's happening with that or when I'm getting it.
Ms. LaFrown Boys, we did give you the amount we've paid on the attorney firms, and as we shared, that if we gave you the bills, those are confidential items, we would have to block out everything, and you would see the amount that was paid, just like the amount that we gave to you. The topics are confidential, even to Board Members.
All right. Don't they work for the Board? Am I not the client? That's where, that's where my confusion is. I should be able to see that, since I'm the client.
Well, you're actually not the client. The Board is the client, and on top of that, the confidential information, like, you don't get to know what students have been expelled.
I don't want to know that. I just want to know, like, they could say, we, someone called him on this date for the expulsion of a student. I don't want to know names, I don't want to, I just want to know what the...
That's not information that we give. We gave you all of the amounts that we did, and we did, I did clear that with Mr. Garrick about what we should do. We could give you those, that everything would be blocked out.
I wouldn't even have the date and the amount for that specific date.
Again, all of that information would be blocked out.
I have a comment.
I think she, she's probably not done with her comment, though.
I'm finished.
Oh.
Okay, Monica?
Just a couple of things. I want to thank the robotics team for coming. I thought that was super awesome to see, and I hope that five students raises soon, because I think it's really awesome what they're doing. I did have something from Addison, because our junior high reps today both had baseball and softball games. They actually, the girls had a doubleheader, they're still playing right now. But she just wanted to say that the students are actually loving the purifiers in the classrooms, but some of them were wondering if maybe we could get two in the band room, because of all the blowing and all the air from their mouths and going everywhere, and she was super excited about, because sticks came back on the menu last week. And just also, I, just a little frustration in being here sometimes, because I feel like it takes from my family and the kids in our district when we're not all getting along. But with lawsuits and things like that, and the words of money well spent, like, money is not well spent that way. Like, we should be doing this for our kids. So, I just, I love doing this, and I love being here, but it is frustrating sometimes and emotional sometimes. Like, I know me and Melissa are super emotional, and most others are not like us, but, like, being here tonight and missing my daughter's doubleheader, and it's her last game, like, it really did stink to not have us be a team, so, that's it for me.
Okay, Beth?
I'd comment back to what Debbie was saying. There's a district that just went through the exact same thing. I have it on my telephone, and the Board just received all those breakdowns of those receipts. So, we do get them as Board Members. Hazel Park High School Art Exhibit tomorrow night, 4:30 to 5:30. I haven't been to the concerts, unfortunately, and field trips. I watched Mr. Plent's Facebook. I mean, he will keep you up to date on everything. And of course, the concerts are always great because the teachers are great and the kids are great. The field trips have been phenomenal. Oh my gosh, the experiences are getting, have been great. I want to do a shout out to Janice Howard. She was a volunteer that came forward and did the first play ever at the junior high. It was mostly sixth graders, some seventh and eighth graders, but it was absolutely, it was fantastic. Mr. Wilkins came with his speakers so you could hear, well, he had eight, he needed 11. So we need to look into purchasing a few more, but you could actually hear the kids. It was awesome. She, I said, how did you do this? The clothing and the props? And she said, I did it out of my pocket. So shout out to Janice Howard for, for being a great volunteer for our kids. I have an apology to two people. I spoke inappropriately at the last board meeting and I apologize. I'm sure they know who they are. It's, it was uncalled for and I shouldn't have done it. I did ask to meet with them. I asked the board president, I asked the superintendent. It hasn't happened and I would be happy to speak to you afterwards, but I'm extremely sorry for what I said in public. You're very qualified and very equipped people and I, I am sorry for that. So graduations are coming up. They're going to be fantastic. As always, it's wonderful to see all the success of the students. So have a good evening.
All right, next up is Melissa.
Where to start? Congratulations to all our staff members for years of service and retirements. Although I haven't had any personal, had personal experience with all of you, I appreciate all that you do, but especially the ones who I've had, whether, whether you were my kids' teachers or other interactions, I've always had pleasant experiences. So I appreciate you all. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Fairbrother, for bringing all these exciting things. Of course, I'm biased, but I've, not only my own children, but Miss, young Miss Gardner here, I, I think she would shine on her own, but with your encouragement and support. It's just a little bit more lifted up. So I appreciate that. I'm sure that's happening with many students. It's obvious. So thank you for all, I mean, not all, all of our teachers, I feel like doing that. And I feel like it's, it's getting noticed more. And as a parent, I appreciate it and I know the kids are just feeling great about themselves because of all the, all that hard work. Kai was very nervous. I was happy to see her be able to get up in front of people. Once again, she's been in other things, but it's a little bit harder to get up and speak directly to people. So. And Mr. and Mrs. Guboe and their family spend so much time supporting these kids, their own time. And I know they've spent their own money, but I, I've, I appreciate that so much. It's a, it's a great program. I agree with Monica that I wish more kids would take advantage of it. I was thinking in my brain ways I can help fundraise. Maybe I can reach out to, to my work or something. But if we could all get, get behind those kids, you know, there's something for everyone. And you know, those kids that are in robotics might not be in athletics or theater. So anyway, we can support all of our kids is great. I don't want to forget anybody. So I, I don't know what else to say, but thank you for being here. Have a good night.
All right, next, Dawn?
Just like to thank everybody for how hard you work for us as usual. And with Monica, it gets very frustrating up here. I apologize. I'm going to take Advil up at the table. I'm also having a problem with coming here and using my vote and doing the work and standing with people when they get the glory of handing out awards or diplomas for not doing their job. This is not what we teach our kids. We teach our kids that you are rewarded for doing the right thing and for doing well. So I feel like the example that's being set up here is atrocious, really. But anyway, thank you, everybody, for what you do.
Okay, next is Heidi.
Again, the robotics was very cool. When that thing started going back to back, round to round, I was in awe. Kudos to you. Five kids, that's amazing and the work you do. And to go, I think you said, from 10th place to 7th place and up, kudos to you. Progress is everything. Congratulations to all the years of service. Dedication means the world to the kids and to the school district. Mr. Fairbrothers, I love his energy. It is so contagious and infectious. And I will agree with Dawn that yes, this atmosphere is awful. I do have a question. Ed Cloverture was here last month and he mentioned, along with youth assistance, that the city doubled their funding for the youth assistance. And I was wondering if the school currently gives money to the youth assistance program?
Of course, we've always given money. However, we've not received a bill this year. And so usually what happens, and I did chat with Mr. Zernus after he said that, because we've not received anything this year requesting funds.
I just think in good faith, since the city doubled it, it might be something for the school to look at doubling also. I know they do a lot of work and a lot of summer programs with the kids and it would just be nice to see that. And I look forward to all the events coming up the next couple of weeks. I'm trying to go to all of them.
A lot.
Yeah.
Okay, Dr. Coupie, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I did miss one thing and I, I'm going to go ahead and do it. Is Melissa McDonald is one of our EL teachers and she has been selected as a NEH Summer Scholar from a national applicant pool to attend one of the 35 summer seminars and institutes supported by the National Endowment for Humanities. The Endowment is a federal agency that each summer supports these enrichment opportunities at college, university and cultural institutions so that teachers can study with experts in humanities disciplines. This two-week program will take place July 16th through the 30th. And Melissa was only one of 24 teachers selected for this fantastic opportunity. While attending, Melissa will attend 35 seminars and institutes covering a wide range of topics such as music, history and culture of the Mississippi Delta, the Holocaust and genocide education, migrant waves and making America, re-threading the needle of the narrative, American history narrative of the American bison. They will, summer scholars who participate in this will teach almost 4,000 American students for the 23, 24 school year. So kudos to her. She's just one of the many, many amazing staff and students that we have here in Hazel Park. May we continue to uplift everybody.
Okay, now it's my turn. I'd just like to thank everybody for coming tonight. I love the robot. I'm waiting for it to throw something at somebody, but you know, it didn't do that. Definitely congratulations to our retirees and for our many years of service by all our employees. Definitely a fantastic thing. And the only other thing I have is hopefully down the road, we can get everybody up here to work together for the best of the children. And somewhere along the line, we got to put stuff behind us and move forward. So that's all I can say.
Motion to adjourn?
Can I add one thing? Can I add one thing? I just want to thank the Richardson. So the softball, the junior high softball team got to go do a practice with the high schoolers. It was like a Saturday practice. And these girls never let up more at a practice than they did that day. They thought it was the coolest thing ever to be practicing with the varsity players. And it like gave them something to look forward to in high school. So I think maybe that would be something cool that more of our coaches could do is getting our junior high kids or even if they did like, I know the camps, but it's kind of fun to do their practice with them. So I just want to give them kudos because these girls love that.
I'm looking forward too to the, all the functions coming up in the next couple of weeks. I mean, there's so many things like every day. So it's just trying to work it in your schedule if you can make everything, you know, that's the hardest part. So.
Okay, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. All right. Meeting adjourned.